Good morning. Thank you for coming. We always appreciate our public, our citizens, for coming and being part of our county government. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And I ask Craig Slate, would you give us our implication?
Let's pray. Father, you are so good to us. And, Father, your blessings and your mercies extended to us are just, they're humbling. Thank you, Lord, for what you do for us and how we can count on you to protect us, provide for us. Lord, you give us a good and stable government here in Rankin County, and we thank you for that. That's a privilege that we enjoy. Father, it is something that we should never take for granted, and we don't. Father, you give us public safety. You give us great emergency responders. Father, you help us to take care of our community. And that, Father, is a real blessing for us. It's a place of service for us, and you let us do that. Father, I praise you for that. I pray, Father, that as we make decisions today, we'll continue to make them in the best interests of all of our citizens, in Christ's name. Amen.
All right. We're gonna go into our public comments and recognition section. We have a pretty healthy agenda. So Craig, would you give us our structure that we do public comment?
Absolutely. Generally speaking, gentlemen, we try to keep our comments to about three minutes per speaker. We like to avoid repetition if we can. So if somebody says something that's the same as what you intended to say, there's no reason for anybody else to say it, it's been said. We like to have good decorum here, and so this is public comment. What that means is, this is not public questions. So we like for anybody that addresses the board to address the board with a comment. We ask our people to address the board and not others in the room. And we appreciate everybody being respectful of one another as we do that. We take the priority to allow our Rankin County citizens to be able to speak to their board. They have the primary right to address their government. And so if you're not a Rankin County citizen, don't be offended if we ask you to wait until after we've allowed all of our citizens to speak.
Thank you, sir. All right. First on my list is Daniel Sistrunk. When you come, give us your name. I know you put your address probably down on the sheet, but for the record, give us your name and address.
My name is Daniel Sistrunk. I live on 220 Levi Cooper Road, Brackton, Mississippi. I came here today on a venue on Bibbs Road, which is in Brad's district. I'm coming here today to try to get the road chipped and sealed. It's currently a gravel road. I understand when I built the venue that Brad and the board said that we would not do nothing to the road. I understand that. Since then, I bought more-
Brad and the board. Brad wasn't a board supervisor then.
Supervisor, okay. The supervisors or whoever was part of the decision when I built the venue, they said they wouldn't do anything to the road, and I understood that. Since then, I bought more property on the road. There's also a house being developed down there. So I plan on developing more on the road, on around 100 acres on the road now. The problem I'm running into is, the venue has got really busy, so I'm having a lot of traffic. So 100 cars every week, sometimes two events a week. And it's, the road crew's done a good job keeping the road up. Gravel's good and everything, but when it rains, the 100 cars is producing a little mud, and then it's translating to the venue. So I'm trying, so I need y'all's help if you can. I think it's .46 miles that needs to be chipped and sealed. .46, a little less than a half a mile, that needs chipped and sealed, or however you would like to do it. I'm asking for help to get that done. Like I said, I bought more land since then. There's a house being developed right there. I'm also planning on, I've already spoken with Renee about building more development down there, and this would help me a lot for my current business and my future business.
Where's the house? Is somebody building a new house down there?
Yes, sir. At the end of the road, so the public road ends, and then it's an easement, and then there's a house, there's a curb where you go to the venue, but at the end, they're building a house right now.
What do you have at your venue, from the venue to the public road?
I have, so I have 38, the venue sits on 20 acres-
What kind of road do you have?
Limestone gravel. Yes, sir.
Are you planning on doing anything with yours?
Well, the limestone holds up pretty good as far as mud. The limestone, you know, holds a lot better than your typical watch gravel. So the mud typically doesn't form on limestone because it stays together. But I will, if we did get the road chipped and sealed, I would look into chipping seal and mine all the way to the parking lot. I would invest that money. It might not be right away because, you know, that's expensive, and I just built the venue, so I'm trying to budget and get, you know, my money back. And I also put back into it. I've already put six or seven loads of gravel on the road this year. And you can go down there, there's piles of slag where I'm constantly trying to improve the road. And the road also stays up because of me, too. I'm always picking up trash. I'm working the road, you know.
Who's throwing the trash out?
Random people. It used to be like, kind of like a dump road. So if you go down there, there's a bunch of dump everywhere. And I've put cameras and signs up and everything to prevent that, and it's working.
You're the only person on that road now that lives that are, has got a house, that house, first house on your left when you pull in is a vacant house now.
Sir, yes, sir.
The gravel road, I think, was, I think the school district asked us to, because at one time it was a school bus turnaround down there at a certain point. That's the reason the county was maintaining the gravel. So, I mean, really, being there's no more kids, we could stop right there at the chip seal. And, I mean, if you want to go to the landowners out there and get something signed by the landowners saying that, hey, you can chip seal from where our chip seal stops at all the way down to your venue, if you can get the landowners to agree that-
We would have to abandon it, the road, for you to take ownership of it.
And you could put a gate up or whatever.
Let me suggest this. I've got miles of gravel road that people live on, have lived on their whole lives. And one of the last developments on the gravel road, it was, I don't remember how many lots, but a few lots scattered that are developer. We required him to upgrade the county gravel road. I mean, it's hard for me to sell to people that live in Cross Gates or North Brandon Estates or whatever. We required the developers at that time to build roads. And then they're there, and they're paying taxes for someone to build a business or a developer, for these people to pay the taxes to upgrade, especially those that live on a gravel road that's been there for generations, and they're saying, when are you gonna get to my road? Well, we have a plan. We have a road plan. I think the thing we should do is include that road in our road plan. Our road plan is a four-year plan that we review at four years and relook at where we're at and set it again. We can't put, I mean, it's not gonna be first on the list because of all the other gravel roads that people have lived on. And I don't suggest going in and chip sealing on a gravel road that just don't have a base. The first move would be to put a base in, especially one that has a couple hundred cars coming and going a week. Let your supervisor and the board work with our road manager and see where we can fit it in. Okay?
Yep. So when should I contact somebody, or how will I know if that's gonna be worked in or-
Well, I mean, there's a lot of roads off of Inner Cannon that are still gravel, and I mean, right now, I can't chip seal or pave your road unless I do the rest of them down through there.
Was it clear to you when you built it that the road was not gonna change?
Correct. But a lot of stuff has changed since then.
Well, there's nothing changed, no more houses down there.
They're building a house right now. They're building a house right now.
No, I mean, it takes tax dollars to build a road.
I understand.
And I mean-
So is the issue budget?
We can give you a answer. We can give, yes, yes. We have to work under a balanced budget. And we don't have the authority like our national friends to go in debt.
So let me ask you this. There's a new venue being built on Levi Cooper Road, and the county came in and, I would say, cleared three quarters, a half a mile to three quarters of a mile right away, 40 feet on each side. A month of equipment there. Dozers, excavators, dump trucks.
I believe, that's not my district, but I did go down there. I believe that had some energy or southern pine where they were moving the poles, getting them out of our right of way. We didn't build a new road.
Levi Cooper is worse than what your road is.
We didn't-
I live on Levi Cooper.
You know how rough Levi Cooper is.
But let me get things straight. There was no power ran.
No, you're not here to get things straight. Remember that? Your public comments, okay?
Yes, sir. Can I make a comment?
Well, I'm gonna answer, we did not chip seal or pave a gravel road on Levi Cooper.
Correct.
We moved the right of ways out to move electric service and things to where they would not be in the, in problems down the road. And that's typical. There was no improvement, really, of Levi Cooper Road.
Mr. President, if I can, just, one way to maybe address it, it sounds like Mr. Sistrunk wants some action to happen quickly. The issue for us, obviously, is we have to establish a public purpose, and what you've heard is that there may be one house under construction, but literally, this effort would be for the benefit of a private venue. And so it's gonna be powerfully difficult for the board to establish a public purpose for the expenditure of chip sealing or extending the chip seal to get you to the point of ingress egress for the venue. So it wouldn't be appropriate to do it under these circumstances. As the board looks forward to providing adequate access in the future for a greater and more established public purpose, that is, more housing development is coming online, that type of thing, it'd be appropriate to look at it at that point. What I think would be helpful is to connect Mr. Sistrunk with the vendors who provide chip seal services and work to the county. And let him accommodate his requirements with and through those private vendors. And he can do that at his own expense, and he can do it when he has an opportunity to do it, and he don't have to wait on the board to make later findings about a public purpose. That's, I think that's the best way to address this. We'll get him in touch with who we like to use for these services and who's probably gonna be easy to work with to establish appropriate width and right of way and meet our standards and all that other kind of stuff. I think we can, we can at least be helpful in that respect.
Okay.
I still need a comment.
All right, go ahead. You're running out, I mean, you will run out of time.
I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying, sir. So what was done on Levi Cooper, there was no electric poles there.
We're not talking about Levi Cooper.
We're talking about Bibbs Road now.
I know, but we're talking about budget. If we're talking about budget, that costs a lot of money. I mean, I'm trying to get to my point, and y'all won't let me.
Yeah, Mr. Sistrunk, what I don't think you understand is that these gentlemen run their budget, and they get to make priority decisions on their budget, and Bibbs Road is right now not a priority. That's, that's your answer. Bibbs Road is not a priority, and these gentlemen are gonna control the budget the way they wanna control the budget.
Yes, sir, I understand. But what happened on Levi Cooper was also a private establishment that is being built, a venue, just like mine, is being built. And that work was done, there was no power poles on that road. That work was done, and then there was power ran. So Rankin County cleared the road for the power to be ran.
Gentlemen, I think we can see what's going on here. There's, there's a venue competition going on, and this gentleman is uptight about that. So I, we've addressed, we've addressed what we need to address, Mr. President, I think we can move on.
Is there anyone else? I have Don Clyburn. Do you have something in addition to what he has said?
Y'all ready for your questions?
Thank you, sir. All right. We're gonna move into old business.
Most to approve minutes.
Minutes for April 15th and May 2nd. Jay makes a motion to approve them.
Second.
Scott seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Give me just a second here.
I'm gonna get the door for you.
All right, Jay made that motion, Scott seconded it. All right. Have we all had a chance to look over the consent agenda?
I made the motion to approve.
All right. Brad makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jay seconds that motion. All in favor?
Just out of curiosity, what are we doing for lunch?
It's a fire department support, like maybe they're working on a tanker or-
Fire department, a truck broke down. We had two trucks broke down. We had to get one, one's in the shop, been in the shop, and another one broke down, so we got somebody to come out and address that and get it back so we wouldn't have two of them down.
All right. I believe, Scott, did you make the motion, and Jay seconded it? Oh, Brad made the motion.
Did you second it?
Jay seconded it?
Jay.
All right. So I got Brad making a motion, Jay seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. All right. Tax assessor, Smith Stacey.
Who is Vernon Jones?
Vernon Jones.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. A, petitions. Yes, I'm back. I've been missing y'all. Thanks for taking care of me in my absence. A is petitions to adjust 2023 homestead exemption supplemental rule.
Motion approved.
Second. All right, Jay makes a motion, Scott seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
B, petitions to change, for change of assessment on 23 real and personal property assessments.
Motion approved.
Okay, Brad makes a motion, Jay seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
And C, authority to change the taxing district for Penn 12313 to the correct taxing district of 216, and then the authority for a corrected tax statement for 23 taxes.
Motion.
Okay, Scott makes a motion.
Second.
Jay seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pittman? Purchasing clerk?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to add to the board to, for the authority advertised for a semiannual bid on asphalt.
Most to approve.
Second. Jay makes a motion, Scott seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion approved. Thank you, sir. Mike Harrison, let's see if you can beat this fast. You got three minutes.
I can beat three minutes. Roadwork accomplished for April, and roadwork scheduled for May.
Motion approved.
Brad makes a motion.
Second.
Jay seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Take B and C together, two AT, AT&amp;T permit utilities, both District 1. One's on Butler Place and Maple Street, and the other one's on East Petro's and Basswood Lane.
I make a motion.
Sid makes a motion.
Second.
I don't know who got it, I'm gonna call Scott.
That'll work.
Scott got it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
We take D and E together. They are ceasefire permits. One is a District 2, and one's a District 3. On that.
Motion approved.
Second. Jay makes a motion to approve. Scott seconded that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Trying to make sure I got it all covered, one left on page. And then we got three from Comcast, FG, and H.
Motion approved.
Second.
FGH.
All right. Brad made a motion, Scott seconded the motion. Any other discussion?
Yeah, so they're just doing copper wire, they're not doing fiber? Seems kinda a waste.
Comcast, you know, they're pretty well still. I don't know why they're not running Wi-Fi anymore, or it hasn't, they-
They're hoping for Wi-Fi broadband.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor? Motion passes.
I got a I, which is Centerpoint Energy on Coleman and Kelly Circle, gas line.
Motion approved.
Second. Brad makes a motion, Scott seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Yeah, Jay, just didn't see the Centerpoint, but Centerpoint District 4, Stockbridge Road and stuff.
Motion?
Second.
I made a motion, Scott seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
K, authorize issue of purchase order for Gunnar Road Bridge SA 61-055.
What is that?
Gonna be a bridge, we're gonna be changing that on Gunnar Road, and this will be county for, county money being done for this bridge. It's not off.
Are we gonna do it before we start the road construction?
Be done as the road construction being done.
Is this part of it?
It's outside of it.
Oh, okay. I got it, but Hypel's doing it so they ain't gonna hold themselves up.
I make a motion. Steve?
I made a motion. Okay. All right. Sid makes a motion. Scott seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
And we're moving, we're moving pretty good with our bridges now. Like the one we've got now will be through next week sometime, and-
That's good, 'cause Steve saw it was finished last week.
I did. And then we've got some in Steve's area we're tearing out right now, so, but everything seems to be back on track on bridges right now.
Not really. You haven't even talked about mine yet, so.
Oh, it's in the works.
All right.
Just a lot of permit issue on that one.
Hey, Mike, has Hypel got some of that silt fence and stuff cleaned up there on the other end?
I reported it to them, Sid, and they're gonna, they're supposed to be sending a crew out there to clean up silt fence. There were several other places I found out there on the job that needed to be cleaned up on the old job. So Chris was getting ahold of them to get that cleaned up.
Okay.
So I'll check on that and see the status of it.
Okay.
Mr. Parker, county engineer.
Morning.
Good morning.
The first item we have is soggy bottom lot 2. We recommend an approval of that final plat. That's a rural subdivision on Sand Hill Road. It's a 19-acre tract. It's one lot. We recommend an approval.
Do we have in there no further subdividing?
Yeah, it's, well, it's actually platted, so it's a platted lot. So if it, they would have to actually come back to us, to the county, to amend the plat.
The reason I'm interested, these are not, it's 19 acres, but they have 150-foot frontage, so trying to spaghetti different driveways would not be good. All right, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Brad seconds that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item B, Mr. President, is on the state aid project SAP 6119M. That was our scrub seal and ultra-thin overlay. It had two roads in it, Shillwall Road and part of Old Highway 471. The product's been complete for some time, but apparently State Aid's in the mood to close out some projects. So this is the second one in a couple of months that we've closed out. We recommend an approval of the board order and joint letter of acceptance and authority to sign those documents.
Motion.
Okay. Scott makes a motion.
Second.
Jay seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Item C, Mr. President, is on the stormwater detention restoration and hydrologic restoration at Live Oaks. Program element number 3.02. This is by the name. You can tell, an ARPA project. We traditionally just call it Live Oaks Subdivision Project. You should have in front of you a copy of the certified bid tab. We took bids a week ago. The low bidder is Hodges Land Services LLC. Their bid was in the amount of $1,113,490, which I will say was considerably below our estimate. They are actually, with our firm, they're under contract with some other clients right now, and we've done a lot of research on the firm. Can't find anything but good. I'll say this, the bid opening that day, we, when we opened the bids, I immediately asked him, are you, you need to go back and check this? And he said, I got five trucks and five drivers that could haul riprap today that are doing nothing. He said, I gotta get my boys to work. So he's, I think, he knew what he was doing when he put this bid together, in our opinion. He just, he needed work.
Okay.
So we have no reason not to recommend.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All right. Brad makes a motion, Jay seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion approved. All right. Mr. Slate?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to add to your section, wherever it's at?
Public hearings.
No? No.
Yes, sir. Why don't we go ahead and take care of that? Thank you for reminding me, Mr. President. Gentlemen, you have in front of you a sheet of paper at the top. It's, it says board agenda, May 6th, to set public hearings. You see those public hearings are listed there. There's six of them. They're all set for the same day. It'd be appropriate to take one motion to set all six matters for May 15, 2024, at 9:00 a.m.
We need to add it first?
Add it and then, and then adopt it.
I make a motion to add 1 through 6 from May the 15th. Second.
Okay. Brad makes a motion. Sid seconds a motion to add, public, setting the public hearings. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes to add.
I make a motion to approve.
Brad makes a motion to approve. Sid seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. All right, now, Mr. Slate.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, item A in our section is the conduct of a public hearing to establish the Langford Fire Protection District pursuant to Mississippi Code Annotated Section 19-5-151, pursuant to Mississippi Code Annotated 19-5-153, subparagraph 2. The Board of Supervisors received a petition signed on behalf of 25 property owners in the area proposed to be incorporated as the Langford Fire Protection District. That petition was received. That petition was submitted to the Circuit Clerk. The petition was reviewed for accuracy and for legitimacy of the signatories. It was confirmed that more than 25 individuals, property owners, had executed the petition in compliance with subsection 2 of 195153. The board then scheduled this public hearing for today, published notice in the newspaper, and hailed any individuals living within the area of the proposed district who wished to address the board, to come before the board today at this time, May 15, 9:00 a.m., to explain their, their being in favor or their being in opposition to it. So at this time, that public hearing is open, and I will ask if there is anyone here to speak on the matter of the Langford Fire Protection District who is opposed. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the establishment of the Langford Fire Protection District? Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone. Yeah. Uh, Mr. President, I don't see anyone here, uh, to, uh, to speak in opposition. I conferred with Samantha, and we, in fact, have received back the appropriate proof of publication of the notice of the public hearing, which is what is required to provide notice to the public. Along with the proof, there is the actual legal description for the proposed district. There is a map that displays the proposed district that has roads on it and other identifying information that would be helpful to anybody in the public. And so that's been done in accordance with the law. Uh, I have reviewed the petition. I have reviewed the statute, and now it will be appropriate with, Mr. President, with your permission, to walk you guys through what it is that you have to find in order to establish a fire protection district and to take your, your responsibilities. So if y'all are, are prepared to do that, I can walk you through that.
Craig?
Yes, sir.
Before you... May I recognize the people that showed up in favor of this action? Uh, if you're here in favor, would you please stand? Thank you. All right. All right, you are on our public comment section. I don't believe there's a reason to address that.
I think at this point, all that can happen is they mess it up. So my advice would be to stay right where they are. Mr. President, with your permission, I'll walk you guys through what your findings have to be on the record. All of this will be put, uh, into written format as a resolution that will be adopted by the board. Uh, and there'll be some additional paperwork requirements that have to go into place before this becomes official. I read from Mississippi Code Annotated Section nineteen dash five dash one fifty-five. If at such public hearing, the Board of Supervisors finds, number one, that the public convenience and necessity require the creation of the district, and two, that the creation of the district is economically sound and desirable, the Board of Supervisors shall adopt a resolution making the aforementioned findings and declaring its intention to create the district on a date to be specified in such resolution. The resolution shall designate the name of the district, define its territorial limits, which shall be fixed, and state whether or not the board shall levy the tax authorized in Section nineteen five, one eighty-nine, and whether or not the Board of Supervisors proposes to assess benefited properties under a separate code section. This board's notice stated that it would consider levying up to two mils for the district under code section nineteen five, one eighty-nine. That means it applies to all of the properties within the defined boundaries and not just the benefited parcels. Is that clear to everybody?
Yes.
So this would not be atypical. That we have, I think, five fire protection districts scattered across the county currently. So this will be similar to each of the five that are already in place. Uh, and those are operating with a board of commissioners, with a levy structure, with a collection of, of tax levy and a remittance of the levy for the support of the work of the fire department. Now, the chief and I had a couple of conversations about this. The benefit is, it takes the fire department out of the voluntary fundraising responsibilities to support the operations of the department. They need to be about the business of providing fire protection and not trying to raise money all the time, right? Everybody likes their pork butts. Nobody's complaining about that.
We are still gonna be able to give.
Would like to, would like to continue that, but let's, uh, helping them get out of the business of having to do that to make a living, uh, would be very helpful. And so the board is considering and would, in fact, through the adoption of the resolution, uh, you would set both a date certain of starting it and a tax levy on the properties within the proposed boundaries of the district, which have been identified, of two mils. That's your max that you're allowed to do on the block. Everybody clear with that? So I need y'all to make a finding, public convenience and necessity.
So we're gonna put two mils on for?
Two mils. That's, that's the max amount that can be levied for a fire protection district, and it applies just to the properties within the district boundaries.
I'd, I'd rather set it at two and then have to come back in three or four years and revisit this. They have done a tremendous job, uh, responding and professional. They have tried to keep up with the expenditures, with drives, boot drives, selling the... Boston butts and other things. Uh... But it's hard to operate their size operation on donations.
Yeah, so the benefit is recognized. Langford responds to a significant area. They have a dedicated response area. So this overlay of this fire protection district actually mirrors their response area. So all of the properties are already being provided fire protection. They're already getting the benefit, but not necessarily having to contribute to the cost of that. So this takes that situation and corrects it. Now, each property that is being provided fire protection, by the way, they are also benefiting from lower home insurance rates.
Yes.
Just by virtue of the way that Langford keeps itself policed, uh, politic, uh, equipped, trained, certified, operating. That, all of those things are happening.
And much of the time, even a medical emergency, they're there.
Yeah.
And, and like you said, on homeowner's insurance, the amount of reduction on your homeowner's insurance would way more than pay for a two-mil increase.
Right. So i- if the board is prepared, again, the findings would be that public inconvenience, public convenience and necessity require the creation of the district. That's number one. And then, number two, it's economically and feasible and it's desirable to establish the district. That's, those are the two findings you gotta make today on the record. And so I would ask for a motion to that effect. Uh, and then a part of the motion would be to levy the two mils for purposes of deriving the revenue that the department needs to operate.
All right. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion passes.
Thank y'all for your service.
Thank you.
Prefect.
Thank y'all.
Come a long way.
Sir.
I wanna compliment the leadership of the department because all of the legwork that had to be done, those guys did it. Every single one of them participated in making sure that this went smoothly. I like the fact that they did such a good job. Nobody showed up to be in opposition to it. So I'm grateful to them for all the work that they did to make my life easy.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank y'all.
Ladies.
All right. Scott B.
Oh, I'm still on, aren't I? All right, item B is authority to issue check for our land acquisition for economic development on behalf of Rankin County. Quick update, gentlemen. Uh, I drove harder, bargained than y'all required of me. Uh, I don't know if y'all remember, we, our security deposit o- on that transaction was two hundred thousand. And so I just asked if it'd be okay to keep our security deposit in place until we could sort out that one issue of the extra four acres and trying to get that sorted out, and they readily agree, just keep the security deposit. So that was actually slightly more than we had said we were gonna hold back. So we've got a full two hundred thousand security deposit that'll sit in place. We're gonna pay them the balance of the purchase price, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of four point two million dollars. This is almost a two hundred, two hundred acre parcel that we're talking about here, and we've identified that as a significant and strategic economic development parcel for Rankin County. So I just need authority to issue the check so we can go ahead and get that matter closed.
Motion.
All right. Scott makes a motion.
I'll second.
Brad seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion passes.
Last item under my section, gentlemen, is authorization to publish a notice to bidders for each American Rescue Plan Act project identified on exhibit A. Sam, do they have exhibit A?
They have positive.
Yeah. If you guys will quickly look through that exhibit page, you'll see each standing ARPA project on our schedule. This is what was submitted to MDEQ. These'll be the projects that have not yet gone to, oh, thank you, that have not yet gone to bid. Can y'all please look over that? If there's any project that you can think of that you don't see on here, and it may be because you, you're not familiar with what it's being called precisely, please speak up.
Yeah, I don't see, uh... What's it called? The only thing I know is, uh, Barnett Bend.
Yeah, I asked specifically about that one, Jay. I'm still waiting. So what I would propose is, Jay, if you will, make the motion contingent on Barnett Bend being on exhibit A.
Okay.
Okay? You good with that?
Uh, one question I have is, there's bridges on here?
Yes, sir.
Or, or doing under the commodity?
That's correct.
So that's already been advertised?
Yeah, we don't need a bid on that, do we?
Right. And, and aim the, the two-hinged chapels are actually under construction.
Yeah. Tim, this is one of those deals where just catching everything. We just making sure. So there, there's not a lot of precision here. My only concern is that we know about a project that doesn't appear to be on the list. I want it on the list, whether it needs to be on the list or not, really, to be honest with you. So, Jay, are you, are you good making a motion that would say, as long as Barnett Bend gets on here?
Right.
I'm good with this?
All right. I'm gonna put it in my notes.
Craig, I think there may be one more.
I understand.
Jay, I make motion to approve contingent we add Barnett Bend on here.
Yeah. Second that motion.
Okay. Jay makes a motion. Scott seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion passes.
Hey, Jay, we, it's possible that Barnett Bend's already been offered us, and we just don't know if that's what's happening.
That's three Live Oaks, that's not a lot, 'cause we just, we'd already.
Yeah, Live Oaks, we took, just took care of. We may have done Barnett Bend earlier, but I, I'm just trying to be extra careful.
Okay.
We'll make sure.
All right.
That's all under my section.
All right. Mr. Hicks? You can speak from your seat.
Thank you. Um, item A is approval to accept a MDEQ grant in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and, three hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that's for our solid waste assistance program.
All right.
Mr. Brad?
Jay makes a motion.
Second.
Scott seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion passes.
Item B is acknowledged receipt of one thousand, three hundred and two home state applications and a hundred and sixty amended home state applications submitted by the tax assessor's office to the Chancery Clerk's office to the market.
I make a motion.
Sid makes a motion.
Second.
Jay seconds a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion passes. All right. Additional business?
I do have one quick item in additional business, uh, dealing with the parking lot here at the annexed building. We have a couple drainage issues, uh, with inlets. And what I'd like is to, just to let you know that we're gonna have to go out and get some quotes to get, fix some inlets and maybe rearrange some curbs and repair just some underground issues. So I'm just making you aware, there's people out here and the parking lot's cording off. That's what we're doing. Cause we've got some underground issues that we're gonna have to deal with.
Okay.
So I'll report back once we have a finding.
I'm, Mike? Yeah. Wait, whoa, whoa. Uh... I see in the audience, Mr. Smith? Would, are, do you, do you have something? I, I don't have you on public comments, but I don't, I don't wanna leave you out.
Additional business?
Okay. We can bring your mic.
Stay there.
We're gonna bring him a mic.
That way you stay seated.
We're gonna get you a mic.
Thank you, Sid.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, for the chance to talk to you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm here today representing the, uh, Richland Creek Watershed District. As you know, it's a pretty extensive project, and we are trying our best to get, uh, some improvements, you know, incorporated so that it will, uh, give us better drainage, uh, in, in the county. Uh, we have approximately a million and a half, a two-million-dollar project. It will be approved here in, uh, probably sixty days, and that will give us, uh, some, some significant improvements in getting the water discharged faster and all that kind of stuff.
Where's that at? Where are y'all doing the work at?
It will be from, uh, Brandon all the way to Pearl River. So it's gonna be extensive minor work. I, what we're doing is, uh, my dad started the watershed district in nineteen sixty-one. And he, uh, uh, over the years, he, he ran that for years.
Are y'all cleaning it out, or are y'all cleaning it out, or adding more rock, or?
Oh, no, no, we're cleaning it out. We're trying to de-snag it and get all the stuff and trees that are falling into it. Just the, on the lower end, that's where our property is. Uh, from, uh, oh forty-nine, well, actually above oh forty-nine, but from there all the way to Pearl River, it, it, our property borders Richland Creek. And so I'm really familiar with that part of the thing. But there's a lot of stuff upwards, uh, towards Brandon and all up in there where all the development is putting a lot of more water on, a lot more water on the district. And, uh, it is, it's, uh, we got to do something to open it up to keep flooding people downstream and upstream. So that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to get projects going that will, uh, that'll allow us to do that. And this first project will go a long way to open it, open up the main channel. Now...
Who's doing the work?
Nobody's doing it now.
Well, I mean, y'all put it out for bids, or y'all?
Yeah, it'll be put out for bid. It'll all be put out for bid, uh, just the way we always do it.
You don't, you hadn't selected a bidder?
Nothing. We, we can't do anything until the Farmers Home Administration releases the, uh, the funds, uh, to us, and you, you'll be notified of all of that and so forth.
It's, is it, what used to be called the Farmers Home Administration? Is it rural business or rural development?
Well, they got some new.
Yeah. Okay.
But it's, it's, it's in the...
It's probably NRCS.
NRCS? Okay.
It's NRCS, yeah. You know? But, uh, we need to be planning to do some more things, uh, to reach out beyond Richland Creek, near the main channel. We need to reach out to a lot of the laterals to make it, uh, more effective for people up around Pearl and Brandon and, you know, on further east.
Yes, sir.
And so that's what we're trying to do, is set up a project to start doing that.
Okay.
And that's what we'll be doing.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
One of the things that we need is right now, uh, I don't know, am I only, the only commissioner, only commission?
Yes, sir, I think so. Uh, have they put, have they been activated?
Yes, the Chancery Court has, uh, established, uh, Miss, you know, Mayor Pat Sullivan and Mayor Jake Wyndham are the two commissioners that took Freddie Harrell's, one took Freddie Harrell's place, the other one took Mr. Alvin Beck's place. Those two gentlemen have been seated. And so it's a full commission now. There are three commissioners, Mr. Smith being one. So we have a full complement of the commission, and the district's actually able to operate to some degree. They, they're handling their business. Uh, we've been working closely with, especially with Jake and with Pat, uh, to make sure that, that the insurance requirements and the bonding requirements and all of the legalities are handled. Uh, you, you guys are very familiar with, uh, the state legislature's, uh, assistance to Rankin County as an assistance to Richland Creek Drainage District. And so that, that work has been ongoing now for the better part of about three years, if not longer. And so it's, it's been, uh, very active. We've been very engaged. I appreciate very much how the district's, uh, leadership has worked with the county, including Mr. Smith. And, uh, things seem to be moving in the right direction. Uh, it, you know, irrespective of, of what's happened in recent days with our approach uh, to, to try and address this at a countywide scale, irrespective of that, we still have Richland Creek as an active, ongoing, engaged drainage district where we have legal authority, uh, to act. And so, uh, so I, I feel encouraged that we're gonna continue to, to make progress. Maybe not quite as much as we had hoped, but when you couple our ARPA programs and our work with Richland Creek together, we're addressing a lot of stormwater management issues all over the county.
Good.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, hopefully with the board now, y'all can, uh, make more progress on your end, too.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Is there any other additional business to be discussed?
Yeah, I got a little, about the Monterey Fire Department's going to talk with Mike. See, Brad got a email, they want some of our parking lot.
Watch that edge.
Yeah, repaved and I went by and took a look at it, got some pictures and I think our crew can, uh, you know, just patch it, the spots with, uh, with our, you know, paving machine.
I think that's what Mike said.
You know, I don't know.
They've been in the past patching because a lot of that parking lot is still under the forestry.
Right.
Leasers, the Mississippi forestry, I guess owns a majority of that parking lot and the county owns a portion and then Monterey owns a portion of it.
They was having a vent, I think, coming up in September and, and it is in bad shape and I'd like to say if Mike can, and we can get our crew out there to, you know, fix the, the parking lot, I think we can do it pretty reasonable and, uh, uh, get that done.
We don't, I don't think, gotta have no action on that.
Right, I was just gonna discuss it.
This is, y'all forgive me, I was pow-wowing over here.
It's.
Where is this?
The Monterey warning station.
Monterey warning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We just need, we need to make sure, let me look at the ownership structure there. If we've got forestry commission involved in it, that could be the secret sauce.
They own that property beside.
Alright, what we can do is look at precisely where jurisdictionally, where the board can act, that Monterey being a volunteer, that's private, uh, that's a private entity. So, we wanna kinda make sure we don't wanna file of what could be characterized as a donation. So, we'll work that out.
Okay.
Work that out.
Alright. Any other additional business?
Mr. President, if you'll allow me, I just got a email a few minutes ago. Told you I'd get you an update on it. Uh, so, I'd like to ask for advertisement of your reservoir east project, if you'll allow us.
Say that again.
Add that to.
It's on the list, man.
It's on there. The reservoir east?
I'm asking for advertisement for a bid.
Oh. Okay.
If you want to.
Yes.
They said it was on this list.
It's on there.
It's four point oh seven.
Yeah, correct.
Excellent. Yeah, we got you.
You good?
It's been done. They just did it a while ago.
Okay. I just like to sure we're good on the advertisement.
You're planning, weather permitting, in the next couple of weeks to start with your maintenance, uh, and that would include micro or asphalt and or whatever the plan is on a good many roads, right?
We just got started last week. Steve just got kicked off pretty hard last week with both of them. So, uh, we're moving through the districts right now. Everything seems to be good. We had a new contractor on our micro side and so far, they've been very impressive of what they're covering.
Craig, can we go ahead and approve moving, say, four million out of the ARPA to the road department for road maintenance?
There's about six in there that, that we can get to, I mean, that is not already obligated.
That's about right.
I don't wanna move it all.
What, what we can do is, subject to, uh, whatever, whatever responsibility we have to notify D E Q. About that transition, that election that you would make, the board can do it contingent on compliance, all compliance and approval from D E Q to allow for that transition. So, here's what Brad is, right now, what you guys did with respect to your ARPA is you, you obligated the funds that were not already utilized for other purposes. Done by the prior board. So, two point nine million in lost revenue characterization and a one point one premium pay characterization, those two together roughly four million dollars. That's how Steve comes up with. We got about six left. That, that has to be carved out of your blanket ten million dollar, uh, what I'll call, that's, that's your, it's the same as taking the standard deduction on your income taxes. You're allowed up to ten as your standard.
And it's a twenty-five percent match?
Uh, no.
No, this is different.
No, this is different.
This is straight.
This, this is different. So, imagine that you, that you, that at first you were gonna itemize your deductions, but all you had was about four. So, it would make sense to take the standard deduction if it's ten. The problem with taking the standard deduction is you're not gonna have that available as you, part of your stormwater package. So, what we're doing is we're looking at the stormwater package and we're figuring out how many projects have under run and there have been some of those. And how many are we likely not to have in a position to go to contract on because we can't seem to get a core permit? And that's a guessing game. You've got about six million that you can utilize as a part of the standard deduction. Take it out of the stormwater and move it over and utilize it for any government purpose, any allowed purpose. Y'all can make that decision.
Well, we got this comprehensive plan book that we, the board did years ago and, and I mean, I'd like to be able to put four million toward that to the worst roads we got in the county and let Mike get them fixed.
We, we have to go through the process now of interacting with D E Q about our stormwater program.
Yep.
And say, we would like to re-characterize a portion of our stormwater funds as standard deduction, right?
So, whatever we take out, y'all are gonna have to decide which projects you're not gonna do. I'd say do the worst ones.
I'm talking about the shallow waters.
Just like the project I was standing up here asking about. We don't have the core permits yet. We're asking for advertising. We're still waiting on core permit.
That's right.
Don't know whether we're gonna get them or not. Say we are.
Whatever we take out, that's, you know.
Well, my two projects that I had was Terror Road, which was three and a half million, and Live Oaks was around it, three and a half, and both of those, one of them's three hundred thousand, the other one's a million.
So, there's four million that were underbid.
Half of that's, half of that's match.
Match, that's right.
Keep that in mind.
Yep, well, we are expecting to get money from the state. Uh, we saw some movement last week from the legislators and we can use that as match.
Yes, sir. It wasn't, let's, let's make sure everybody's talking about the same thing.
Well, I'm talking about two different things.
You authorize, you've authorized an application for some federal funding under FEMA. That has a twenty-five percent match. That's what you were remembering, I think, Mr. President. If we get those funds, you, you will have a match responsibility that you can, you can utilize some of any state appropriations that we get for twenty twenty-four to match.
Yeah, okay.
You understand that? So, I, I think you have your match covered, but we won't, we won't have those monies until.
In a year, right.
So, keep in mind too, Brad, so Brad's talking about something that's totally different than that. He's saying, we feel pretty confident that there's going to be under runs, weirdly enough, on our ARPA program. Where either the projects themselves are gonna cost less because we're not allowed to do as much as we had hoped we would be able to do, they're gonna cost less. Therefore, we are gonna have money available to us under the ARPA program. And what Brad is saying, instead of having to turn around and try to hurriedly get that extra money swapped over to another ARPA program, let's ask D E Q just to give us a wave off and let us re-characterize some of those projects as standard deduction and use them for any other purpose. We're not gonna get a state match on those. We use a dollar of ARPA to put asphalt somewhere, the state is not gonna match that. If we use a dollar of ARPA to do a stormwater project, the state's gonna give us fifty cents back. So, that's the key. That's the thing. Do you wanna do the re-characterization and go through the trouble? Here's another thing, Brad, we don't know how long that's gonna take. We, we may not know that they're gonna let us do this.
Well, we got crews moving in.
The other way is to take it out of our general.
Do it that way.
Is that cleaner, better?
Well, you could backfill with your state funding.
Jay, do you think that would be?
You could backfill with your state funding in November. If you wanna just go ahead and move forward and say, we'll take the state appropriation and put that money back where it was from the state appropriation. You do it that way.
Key, which is the cleanest?
Well, right now, what you have to remember is we've gotten very little reimbursement so far from the state on the ARPA projects.
Why?
Because it's a process.
Okay.
It is a.
I mean, it doesn't mean it's not gonna happen. It just means it's gonna be.
It means there's a lot of hurdles, there's a lot of hoops and there's a lot of, uh, paperwork.
Do you expect that we will be able to accomplish it?
Well, at some point, yes.
Yep.
But, so what you have to remember is all the ARPA projects that have been completed or in process and been obligated are being paid from the original ARPA funds. So, if you go and pull four or six million dollars, we're gonna run out of money before we get the reimbursement. So, that money's already been obligated.
Let's, let's find another avenue then.
I'll answer your question. It's so much cleaner to take it from something other than ARPA.
Okay.
Because there's too much uncertainty.
Okay. Let's, uh.
We do not control the timing of that.
We have no control. We, we don't really control the state appropriation timing, as you know, but I feel pretty confident that if the state says they're gonna send us a check, they're pretty good for it.
Yep.
But we're not gonna get it until November.
November.
So, as long as we kinda all understand, if we, if we use funds available today, here we are in May, we will not be able to reimburse those funds from the state funding until November.
Is it gonna hurt us on our, I mean, is that gonna be an obstacle because of our budget cycle?
No.
No?
If you take the money out now.
Yep.
It's just gonna come out of general.
I know, but we can put it, when we get the money in November, putting it in the next year.
No, I think you're gonna be obligated to spend that money when you get it. I don't think you can go back and reclassify it to put it back in general.
I think what the board wants to do is take some of the money out, so start the process, doing the paperwork, what we need to do to get some asphalt done. I believe that's what. Well, we got crews moving in and I mean, while they're here, we need to get it, probably get it. What y'all thought, what y'all?
I don't disagree with that. I think that's.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Roads and these.
How do I pay to be a drub?
That's all we take.
Key.
Sir.
You say you're not?
I think what Jay is saying, general, and we will do whatever we can to replenish that.
I don't think so, man.
You don't think so?
Well, from what they were saying, we can't pay ourselves back with, with ARPA funds. We gotta designate.
Right, but the state, state money.
State appropriation.
The state appropriation money.
We couldn't do that because, well, I mean, we, we're utilizing the funds for the purpose stated in the, in the appropriation itself. We're just putting it back into an account where we spent it from.
And.
Even I need to figure out if we can do it that way. That'd be the simplest way to do it, if we can do it that way. There's some hurdle that won't allow us to put the appropriation back in general county for some reason.
Well, we'll get the money in July, right?
November.
November. Well, I mean, we pave roads every year.
Yep.
We can always do them next year.
Well, this, the, the reason it's acute is the drought. These roads and especially the more county roads that may not have as good of foundation as the higher traffic around urban areas have cracked, uh, the shoulders are, we're losing them, stuff like that. It's, I mean, we had a lot of these roads in pretty good shape until this past summer and if we don't do something now, we're gonna have to go back and go all the way to base.
We do have four million dollars sitting in an investment account right now that we could pull out and put toward the paving projects. Part of that's in road and part of it's in general county.
Okay.
That's a separate account. That's an option.
Y'all good with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Why don't we add that item if y'all are prepared? I mean, y'all may wanna.
Well, we've got crews that are on, that are ready to be on the ground.
Just need to add it, uh, and I would, I would appreciate specificity that it's, that it's gonna be taken from the investment account.
So, you're gonna intend to take, spend four million and then the five million in November also? The five million is going to, for the trees.
It's gonna take way more than five million.
Well, I know, but we might using that five million to match the FEMA, if I'm understanding all of this right.
Possibly, but we, we need to, we, we need to see the appropriations language. We actually haven't seen that. That's number ones. We've just been told that it, how, kinda how we couched it was road, road maintenance and to, and to address the exigency of the dead trees. That was the justification, okay? But how it gets characterized as an appropriation, we haven't seen that yet. So, some of this is kinda flying blind. Give us an opportunity to see how the appropriation is structured, then I think we'd be better able to tell y'all how you can spend those funds. But it's gonna be, if, if what we understand, it's gonna be for addressing anything that has to do with road maintenance.
Yeah, but we gotta get them trees down though.
Ditches, clearing trees, all of that's gonna be in play. Separately, we have applied for federal funding to actually, that would have to go for removing dead trees out of the road right away.
With the twenty-five percent match.
Twenty-five percent match. And because that is a part of road maintenance, you could use some of the state appropriation as your match responsibility. And if you spend it all.
Which is like two point something million.
If, if you receive the entire.
If you got the full amount that you asked for, you're gonna need somewhere in the neighborhood of two and a quarter.
Well, we can hold off and see what the language says before.
We should be able to tell y'all that. It was today, it's day six.
Six.
We should be able to tell y'all that on fifteen.
Alright.
We should be able to tell y'all that on fifteen.
You comfortable with that?
I'm more comfortable with that.
Alright, let's, let's do that and we'll have more information and. Yes, sir. Mr. Smith.
I went down about two weeks ago and talked to N R C S about the status of our upcoming project and had been assured that it would be funded before August the third first. We get about a million, I think about million seven. And I was wondering if in some way that it could be used to do some of the projects or, or, you know what I'm saying, some way to cross fund some of that. Maybe you could use some of the funds we're getting to help do what you, you wanna do here.
Um, I, I'm not sure to the legality, but we have a, a, a very good counsel. I would say that would be something Craig needs to research and your board needs to address and then get together with what the possibilities are.
We, we can look at that with N R C S. My understanding is that the one point five million that Mr. Smith is speaking about was actually a planning grant and it's, it's actually being utilized to provide a updated comprehensive plan for the work of the Richland Creek Drainage District across its entire drainage districts being done by Wood Environmental out of Memphis, Tennessee. And, and so, that, that has already been spoken for. The planning grant itself will lead to a plan that will then allow Richland Creek to potentially qualify for additional federal funding in accordance with that newly updated plan. So, that's, I think that money's already been spoken for.
Alright, do we have any other additional business? And I'm gonna put on my notes that we're gonna address this funding, uh, road maintenance for the May fifteenth meeting and we'll have hopefully, uh, information that we can make a decision. Alright, any other additional business? Alright, do I have a motion? Do we need to go into executive?
I have a, I have a couple litigation matters that I can update you guys on and I think state, I, I think. I have, I have a couple of litigation matters that I can update you guys on and I think state, I, I think he may have.
Alright, this, our personnel, do you have a personnel?
We'll, we'll call it security planning.
Security? Is, is that one of the items we can, okay, security? Alright, do I have a motion to discuss the need to go into executive for litigation and security purposes?
Motion.
Brad makes a motion?
Alright, second.
Sid seconded the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There's two ayes.
Aye.
Alright, okay, now three aye, that's four. Uh, motion passes, now.
Now I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I make the motion?
They did. You seconded.
I seconded.
Brad made the motion, Sid seconded the motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation and security issues. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.